So we're going to return from recess. I appreciate people's flexibility and patience with our technical problems. And I super apologize that we had to interrupt you, Heather, in the middle of talking. That's I know it's nerve wracking to come and talk, which I've done before when I wasn't a board member, so I apologize to you for that. So I will call you back up again since I still can't remember your name. Take two and a half. Yeah. So welcome.
Thank you.
And whenever you would like to get started, our timer's not working. I will just remind you or prompt you when you're close to three minutes, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Stanley and school board members. My name is Heather Minoffel, and I'm the Vice President of EPAS Edina Professional Association for Sports Staff. Everyone has heard the phrase, "It takes a village to raise a child." This phrase also applies to a school setting. It takes a village to teach a child. There are many people that influence and impact a school, highlighting the Edina Public School teachers who go above and beyond every single day. There are also dedicated, hardworking, longtime staff members that are often overlooked like our EPAS members. Our EPAS employees are a vital pillar in the foundation and essential to the daily operation of the Edina Public School system. Long, long are the days that a secretary or person simply answers the phone, delivers a message, files, and types a memo. Our group works across multiple system platforms, many that require advanced training. They compile and work on data that has financial, academic, and technological implications. Many EPAS members need knowledge of state and federal laws when reviewing paperwork and applications for students. We are the first face or point of contact that a family is greeted with when they interact with our school. We foster relationships with students and parents which help build a caring and inclusive school culture. When looking at wages and benefits across not only other Edina Public School contracts, such as the paraprofessional contract that was just settled, but also neighboring districts, data shows that our fails fall short in wages and benefits. EPAS total compensation per last contract negotiation was 1.76. That was the lowest of any Edina Public School group. The average package during that time was 5.16. I'm coming forward tonight to advocate for our EPAS group by asking the school board to please consider a more equitable, fair market compensation for our group. Edina Public School District and the community as a whole benefit from a school staff member that's being paid a competitive professional wage. Fair market compensation will allow the district to recruit and retain the talent necessary to keep the excellent service standards that our district, families, and community have come to expect. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next, we have Jason Doctor.
I was expecting to go leader after everybody else had a chance to speak here. Good evening, Dr. Stanley, Chairperson Allenberg, Press of the Directors. I'm Jason Doctor, I'm the President of Education Minnesota Edina, and I am here to support a contract, an EPAS contract, that honors and validates the services that they provide to our district. And when I started at Edina in 2001, veteran teachers and veteran administrators took me aside and introduced me to all the EPAS members that worked at Valley View Middle School, and like, these are the people you need to know, right? You need something done, you need a favor, you need to know how to do something, you go and ask them because they run the district. And when I became an Assistant Principal over at Southview, veteran administrators told me the same thing. And I keep hearing that, and we all want that to be true. That's just the truth that we live with, right? The services that we provide as teachers, we couldn't do it to the extent and the caliber that we do without the people behind me. You'll probably hear, well, here's something that I've been very hopeful about. When I read the Board's Goals for the Year, when I read Dr. Stanley, your Goals for the Year, I was like, these are great, this is the direction we want to hear. I read a lot, I heard a lot about building, rebuilding trust with the stakeholders and creating sense of belonging. And, you know, you will hear from people back here, but there were promises that were made. And they weren't necessarily this group, right? But they were people that represented the district, that made these promises. And I'm asking you basically that if we truly want to create a sense of belonging, we got to follow through on those promises. All right, thank you.
Next up is Nancy Knudsen.
Good evening, Dr. Stanley, Chair Allenberg, and all the board members. My name is Nancy Knudsen, and I just started my 26th year in the district. Twenty-two years of those years have been at high school. I started in the counseling office supporting five counselors with a coworker. After ninth grade was out of high school, I now support 10 counselors, three social workers, and a five-year coordinator with my coworker. In the district's strategic plan, there is a goal to add more counselors, so each counselor has fewer students, which is great. But nowhere in the plan does it say the district will add EPAS support to work with the greater number of counselors. The number of EPAS members in the student services office has not changed since before the year 2000, when there were less than 1,500 students enrolled at the high school, where now there's over 2,700. My job responsibilities have substantially grown in the last 22 years, especially the complexity of my position. It's required many new software programs with advanced training and skills, which was not the case at all when I was hired. I enjoy my work, the staff, our students, and parents, most EPAS members do. An example would be the video, it was great, that's why I work for Edina Schools. The counselors felt it was important for me to share that, as EPAS members, we provide accurate secret data, including hand and entry of hundreds of grades and transfer and report cards, and I personally assure that all students' names are correct for commencement. We help all new families navigate our system in Edina, which includes figuring out a way to get past language barriers to provide the best customer service. We have a triage system at the high school in our office for mental health, which means I evaluate when a student stops in and asks for a break and a check-in, and then I decide do they need to see somebody right away, or do they need a little break, and then have somebody check in with them. I also coordinate a non-yes online program used for college applications. The process is very complex and detailed with very precise deadlines. We deserve to be paid at a level equal to other local school districts. This will require a market rate adjustment before any other increases. At this point, we are not receiving close to the average salary of surrounding school districts. And EPAS members generally are going to be the people behind the scenes. I've met most of the board members behind the scenes at commencement, making sure things are running smoothly and really have an important role in our district. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next up is Dorothy Kersner.
After Nancy's positive comment, here comes the Debbie Downer. My name is Dorothy Kersner, I'm a dot, I am Edina resident. Twenty-seven years ago, we moved here from Massachusetts. My two boys started from Edina Schools in '04 and '07, I think I said that in my memo. I've been a volunteer in Edina Schools, I currently am, on Tuesday mornings at my therapy doc at Creek Valley. I'm very heavily invested in the district. And when it comes to another next work, we have to keep our property values up. So, I need to give you a few points to bring up to date in our group. We are a group wrapped in frustration, feeling devalued and disrespected as a consequence of being severely underpaid. Sometimes money isn't the issue, but for us, EPAS members, here we now, it's all about the money. You know we're here because we love kids, otherwise we wouldn't be here. We love working for the staff, that's why we do what we do, like what Jason said. EPAS received over $2 million in extra parish money in the past few years, along with good time monies from the state. We are hoping that board, as the stewards of the district's dollars, allocate enough for our group. Members have told me how upwards they are moving with the new contract, especially by health insurance through the district. We count our salary increases in the dollars, not the tens of dollars or hundreds of dollars, just in the single dollars. I won't repeat the rates that we got last time, but we are asking for market rate and cost of living increases. We have observed in last key contracts, the district seems to be focusing on hiring new staff, higher rates and bonuses, rather than flattening management structures as most organizations do during difficult times. COVID was a very difficult time. EPAS employees may not be as face-to-face with students all the time, but I assure you everything we do has an impact on students and families. Help us understand, please, how districts that receive the same per pupil funding from the state as Edina does can pay close to market rates, but Edina can't, or Edina won't. We are educated, professional, and hardworking employees, and we deserve to be paid competitive wages. EPAS members are not working to pay for vacation, we're not doing it for pen money or for something to do, we work because we need to, we want to, and this is where we want to work because we're in the community. You know, that video is just a small touch. She should be Creek Valley Tuesday mornings with the dog. I received an email, two home emails saying, you know, could you come? And she responded, I unfortunately work the second job now, will not be able to attend a board meeting. I saw the new pay scale for paraprofessionals. Every educational assistant, special area will now officially be needing more than I do, and I have been in long-term pay for two years. It will now just be a time for a job change for me. And this person is the president of Edina. Can you wrap up, please?
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Barbara Cowan.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Stanley. My name is Barb Cowan, and I'm a teacher clerk at Southview Middle School, just down the way. And here are just a few things I gladly do on any given day. Gladly, I help your child work a combination lock and unstick their locker. Gladly, I walk your students to the cafeteria because maybe they missed breakfast. Gladly, I soothe your child who stopped at my desk with tears and nerves. Gladly, I assist children and parents with changes, questions regarding bus stops, pick up drop off times in route because they called me and not transportation. Gladly, I talk to your child who has called me from the bus stop while they're waiting for their bus to have arrived or is running late. Gladly, I run reports, pull data, make name tags, track hundreds of field reports, make many copies, while carefully screening visitors to keep the school and the office and your children and our staff safe. And gladly, I treat your child just as I would treat my own. But never have I worked so hard and been paid so little to do something that feels so important. So, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. That wraps up all our speakers. Thank you for everyone that came to speak tonight. We are now to move on to our consent agenda. We have two items removed from the consent agenda tonight, the personnel recommendations and the inter-district tuition agreement for virtual programming. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
We will now vote to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Is there a motion to approve the personnel recommendations?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This was removed from the consent agenda because one of her lovely board members' daughters now went to Berkeen Kids Club, and so he will be abstaining from voting, and so this was removed for that purpose. So we will now vote to approve the personnel recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The personnel recommendations are approved. Is there a motion to approve the inter-district tuition agreement for comprehensive virtual programming?
So moved. Second.
So, was that you, Karen? Okay, Karen was... Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So, Dr. Stanley, I believe there is some interest in just getting some more background information about the tuition agreements. So I will turn it to you.
All right, I'm going to invite, in random to come up as well, but this is just a little bit of background. Whenever districts have a service that they are able to offer to students from another district, there's something that has been used for many years called tuition agreement. Years ago, it may be that a district was able to offer a course, maybe an AP course or a calculus course, that another nearby district wasn't able to offer. And so districts would form a partnership that would allow the students in the other district to attend the district. In our particular case, we have our comprehensive online Edina virtual pathway. And we had a few middle school students or families of students who were interested in sending their children to EVP for middle school. We did not have enough students, though, to actually hold an EVP middle school. And so from there, I will go ahead and let the gentleman explain what the next step was they followed.
Good evening again. So working with our families in Edina, since we didn't have enough viability for the middle school virtual program, we just started conversations with some other districts with online programs to see if we could partner with them to provide our Edina families with that opportunity if they so choose. So that was what kind of initiated this partnership agreement, is looking for an opportunity to meet the needs of our families, but still keep them in our system. So maybe we can explain how that tuition agreement works.
Simply stated, the tuition agreement, we will be billed through Bloomington Public Schools. They will be charging us 90% of the general education formula, which translates to roughly $6,300. That allows them to provide the service to us, and allows us to retain the student, as well as the dollars generated through local taxpayer funding.
So that does allow the students in Edina Public Schools to remain an Edina Public School student. They would not, for instance, well, their neighborhood family, they wouldn't lose their space, but even if they were open enrollment, that would allow them to remain as any Edina Public School student. I think it honors what we're hoping to do for our families who are interested in online education as we continue to grow and look at how we might become more marketable for middle school EVP program.
So we will be getting a more general update on EVP programming next month, but I want to see if board members have any questions specific to the tuition agreement that is on the agenda tonight. Okay, we will now vote on the inter-district tuition agreement for comprehensive virtual programming. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The tuition, inter-district tuition agreement is approved. Thank you, thank you both. We are now going to move on to discussion items. Up first for discussion, we have Director of Teaching and Learning, Jody DeSteen-Huber here, and Assistant Principal of Edina High School, Jen Carter, to discuss student travel and specifically South Korea Exchange Program. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Stanley, Chair Allenberg, board members and community members. I'm here this evening with Assistant Principal Jen Carter, and we have some several conversations that we're going to have with you tonight. I'm going to turn it over to her to give a high level overview of our first one, which is the South Korea Exchange Program, and then open it up for questions and discussion. Thank you. Sorry. In late 2018, this district had the opportunity to enter partnership with the OnDon schools in South Korea. They had an MLE that was formalized, and in May of 2019, 20 students traveled to Edina Public Schools and stayed with host families to experience what it was like to be a student in Edina. The exchange continued when a group of students traveled to South Korea, this is Seoul, as well as the OnDon Boys School and Girls School, to have their exchange over the period of MEA in October of 2019. We had entered into a potential two-year commitment to have students have the opportunity to do the travel back to back, but then we had a pandemic. So over this time, we remained in contact with the OnDon schools in hopes to be able to restart the exchange. We have started a virtual exchange over the last few years, so students have gone through a variety of check-ins with some students from OnDon, and our hope is to be able to give the students a chance to meet in person. So our recommendation tonight was to have a discussion and answer questions around if we continue to pursue a new two-year agreement, and Principal Assistant Principal Carter has been in contact recently, and so I'd say definitely does want to, and both the Edina Boys School and Girls Schools definitely want to continue to engage in that partnership. And we have a timeline planned out based on kind of what feedback we get tonight as well. So, questions and discussion?
Do you have board members have questions? Or...
I don't have any questions. I'm just supportive. So I think it's great that we're getting back to what we were doing before, and just a lot of good opportunities for students, so.
Is there a limit to the number of students that could participate?
We have to be mindful of transportation, so it would be difficult to have several buses. So the first time we had about 20 students, I think we probably could increase that to about 25 to 30, that would be the hope. But we also need to have a number of boys and girls, because InOnDon schools are very separate. So again, we can throw the city and try to group them together.
Okay, thank you. No, I believe you guys are up again for the next discussion item, which is another travel opportunity for students around Spain.
Yes. So prior to the panel, a teacher came forward with a proposal for a social studies standard trip to Spain. It was approved by the board in February of 2020, in hopes to take place in July of 2021. Clearly, there has been some change in the world, there was a stop on international travel, and that travel opportunity was out there. And we are interested in finding out if you are supportive of continuing that in hopes to travel in the summer of 2023. We would be able to promote this opportunity to students at Edina Public School. Due to a cancellation, there was a STEM trip that was supposed to take place in the summer of 2020. There are some students that are signed up for that trip, so families have the opportunity to cancel, and lost a $500. That was the policy of the travel company at the time, but some of those families decided to use that as credit towards a child that was supposed to participate, so a younger sibling was then put in this Spain opportunity. So we are seeking your support and finding if you have any questions about the opportunity to Spain in the summer of 2023. I have a question.
So, the way I understand it, so it's open to new students that could participate in this?
We would, with your support, we would advertise it, and yes, students would be able to sign up.
Okay.
Okay. It's never actually advertised.
Right, because it's October of 2020, so that was...
Poor timing.
Right. I would say 32 days from that happened. Okay, thank you.
From a process perspective... We had talked about this in teaching and learning, just so people have some background. From a process perspective, my question is, is this already approved, or does this come back as a new trip? Right? And I don't know. I would prefer to look at it as a new trip versus an existing trip that a prior board had approved.
And it's my understanding that we would be within all the same timeframes and stuff if it was just coming to us as a new trip. Is that correct? I feel like we talked about, we wouldn't be missing any deadlines.
I think that doesn't make... Does it impact deadlines, I think is the question.
Yep.
It does.
Oh.
Okay. So it does, okay.
So are you seeking approval tonight to approve the whole trip? Oh, we're in discussion tonight, sorry.
Okay. Based on our TNL board committee conversation, we felt that it would be good to have it in front of all board members as discussion, and then bring it forward for action in October. But it has been approved, but then never promoted because of the timing of it all. I feel like we're back and back.
So if the trip comes back for action in October, does that mess up the timing?
It does not.
Okay.
It does not.
Okay.
But to propose a new trip, we're policy states that it has to have a year end, so we would not be within your parameters of what's set in policy.
Okay, got it. I was just worried about the approval, knowing that with the other trip that we did, there was extenuating circumstances because of COVID, so. And I think that's, I would assume the board is okay with that. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're ready to move on to our policy review discussion. I'm with Policy Chair Julie. I forgot my name when you just looked at me.
I did for one second.
Yes, I did.
Thank you, Chair Allenberg. So we have four policies up for discussion tonight. Just as a reminder, our policies go through our review cycle every four years. We look for clarity and alignment with district practice and state and federal statute and ITO's equity. And so the four policies that we have up are pretty straightforward changes. Policy 101, legal status of the school district is the first. I wanted to ask any board members if they had any questions about that one. It's pretty straightforward, great. Policy 102, name of the school district. Any questions?
Are we taking recommendations or something?
Yeah. Policy 103, equal educational opportunity. This policy had a little bit more substantial changes due to statute. So do you have any additional questions? I don't have a question, just a comment that I'm grateful for the changes. Excellent. And then Policy 104, complaints, students, employees, parents, and other persons. Excellent. So these four policies with no changes will come back for action next month. Thank you.
Thank you, board. See, I...
Green.
I see the board chair green, and then I'm like, it's policy chair green, so I apologize. I remember your name now. So, we're moving on to our action items. Do I have a motion to approve the daily substitute rate for retired teachers of Edina Public Schools? Is there a second? Thank you. We have Human Resources Director Saylor, and she's going to come up if there are any questions from board members. And if you could just do a brief explanation of why you're proposing this, that would be great. And if you could just do a brief explanation of why you're opposing this, that would be great.
Thank you, Chair Allenberg and members of the board. So tonight, we're asking for an increase to the daily substitute rate simply for our retired teachers of Edina Public Schools. We're using Teachers on Call, which is a staffing agency for all other daily substitute services throughout our school district. But our, our teachers who have retired from Edina, we do continue to pay them separately, not through Teachers on Call. And the last time that the board approved an increase for them, to the best of my, what I was able to research, it looks like it was 2018. They're currently at 145 a day, where our Teachers on Call subs are making 165 a day. So the proposal is that we increase our rate for our retired Edina Public Schools teachers to 165 per day and make that retroactive to the beginning of the school year.
Thank you very much. Can you, do you know the approximate total financial impact that this district, that this increase would be?
I do. I looked back at 21, 22 to get a, an idea of how many retired teachers worked in a daily capacity. We have five teachers that worked in a daily capacity. It took, added up those days, and it actually came out to be slightly less than $700.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Do other board members have questions? No? Okay, we will now vote to approve the daily substitute rate for retired teachers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The daily substitute rate for retired teachers is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're, sorry, do I have a motion to approve the Concord and, did I skip something? No, I didn't. Do I have a motion to approve the Concord and Countryside Building Addition Construction Bids? So moved? Is there a second? I'd like to welcome Director of Business Services Mert Wurter to discuss this with us. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the board, colleagues and members in attendance. This item relates to the discussion at the work session held previously regarding the postponement of the Concord Elementary Addition to construction bids being in excess of estimates by about $2.6 million. After the district administration analyzed all of the options moving forward, it determined that the best course of action would be to postpone that project, reject all construction bids, and proceed to rebrief only the Countryside Elementary Addition. This action will discuss the great detail and finance and facilities community of the board, and if there are no further questions, I would recommend that you consider the action for you.
Thank you, board members. Have questions? I guess the question I have is, this was originally came to us, one of the rationale for the construction at Concord was to have additional special education space. And I wanted to, I know you did analysis as per your recommendation that showed that that special education space is not imminent and needed. And I was just wondering if you could speak to that so the community understood that aspect of this recommendation.
Sure. At this time, the Concord facility will utilize a couple of kindergarten spaces that would be used for special education. At this time, those spaces are not needed due to A, kindergarten enrollment not being at the level that was anticipated, B, special education IEDs actually getting 13 fewer than the previous year. So at this time, we don't think that the space issue is imminent.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor of approving the Concord and Countryside Building Addition Construction Bids? Say aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, no.
Rejection.
Yeah, I was saying, so let's reel it back a little bit. All those in favor of rejecting the Concord and Countryside Building Addition Construction Bids? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the construction bids are rejected. So thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the intent to issue certificates of participation? So moved? Is there a second? Second? Back to you.
As a reminder, this item is a continuation of the previous item, and this was also discussed at the August 27th work session. And there was a presentation made by Minnesota Advisors Ellers and Co., where they discussed the $14.65 million issuance of debt to finance the Concord and Countryside Addition. As we know, the Concord Addition has been postponed. The $14.65 million is anticipated to be enough to finance the Countryside Addition. However, within the parameters of the motion, the amount is in excess of the $14.65. That was done in anticipation of the board actually not going through with the previous action and moving forward with both additions. If there are no further questions, I recommend that you evaluate the recommendation for you.
I have a clarifying question. So the, the issue of certificate of participation is set at $17.5 million. Is that, are we now editing that to the lower amount or are we just maintaining that as a 17.5?
The 17.5 is nearly the maximum that we could issue under this parameter, so we will certainly issue a number less than that.
Any other questions?
Just for, just to clarify, are we certain we're going to be issuing an amount less than that? I don't want to be, we were hopeful.
We would return to the board for further consideration. We wouldn't issue without the board's approval.
We could go up to that amount depending on what bids come in.
That is correct. We couldn't, I mean.
Okay, we will now vote to approve the intent to issue certificates of participation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The intent to issue certificates of participation is approved. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 board goals? Is there a second? Is there any discussion about the board goals? I know that, I feel like we've discussed these multiple times.
No, I don't have a question. I'm just wondering if Chair Allenberg and, or I guess it's the government's committee. Is there any changes that have been made since we saw that last?
None.
Okay, that was, yeah. Great, thank you.
Yeah, no changes. So these are the board goals. I don't know what else to say, so. We'll now vote to approve the 2022, 2023 board goals. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The board goals are approved. Do I have a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 superintendent goals? So moved? Second? And then these are Dr. Stanley's goals for the year. You will notice we did not correct that change to merge the two documents, so I apologize for that. I did say that that would be corrected by this board meeting, so we will get those two things merged. Dr. Stanley, did you have any comment about your board goal, sorry, your superintendent goals?
I don't. I just really believe they're directly aligned with strategic plan and excited for the work that's already happening.
All those in favor of approving the 2022, 2023 superintendent goals, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The superintendent goals are approved. That finishes our action items. We're now going to move to board leadership and committee updates. Are there any committee updates?
I've got a communications committee update that our video is just about done. They're making a correction to it. And the communications committee is officially in recess. We have one outstanding action item that we will pass over to the governance committee to take over, but we are officially, what would the word be?
Adjourned. Adjourned, okay.
Great.
Well, thank you all for your work.
Thank you. It was Amy Shaw, Michael Burman, and Julie Green. I appreciate your work on the communications committee, so I'm excited to see the video. Any other committee updates?
I only have one chair updating one, and that is that we have two individuals in our finance department, Bailey Nash and Amanda Moore, and they completed their Masbo, and I apologize if I don't know what Masbo stands for, but I know Merck does, so.
The Minnesota Association of School Business Officials.
Thank you. It's a voluntary certification program, and they actually did 33 hours of voluntary coursework in training in areas of school finance, plus additional credit hours from other Masbo training and events. So I just wanted to congratulate them. It's a big achievement, so thank you. I will turn it over to Dr. Stanley for superintendent updates.
Well, technology, yeah. First of all, I do want to say that the start to the school year has gone just incredibly well. I have been on the schools for the past few weeks, and staff say that they are feeling relieved, quite honestly. Every time I speak with someone, they say it feels really good. They're looking for wood so that they can knock on wood. But I say we are, we're in the fourth week of school, and so maybe this is, this is a pattern that we can rely on now. And so I just want to thank all staff, regardless of your role, for everything that you're doing to really bring on the 2022, 2023 school year and just the great way that it's been brought on. And then I have, oh, I also want to say before I read a statement, that next week, the consortium superintendents will be in Edina. So we are members of the Seven District Consortium for High Performing Schools, and each year, we visit one of the other districts, and Edina is hosting, and they will be here next week, starting on Tuesday evening all the way through Friday morning. We have a rigorous experience planned for them. Our focus across all of the districts, because we all experienced this last year, was related to staff mental health awareness and morale, and so each of the districts will be presenting on the work that they're doing thus far. We actually are working with Joe Kavanaugh, who's local, and many of you may know Joe, about purposeful leadership. And then we are going to dig just a little bit into some of our teamwork that each one of the districts is doing. And so we, we will be going from 7:30 in the morning until 8, 9 o'clock at night at times, but we are really excited to be able to host them and to have them come in. Then I would like to read a statement. So this past Friday was homecoming. A day that has great memories and typically a time for everyone in Edina across generations to celebrate all that is great about Edina, all that is great about going to school in Edina, just so much pride that exists. Despite the rain, so many people turned out for the parade, and the kids were incredibly excited to get their candy, and parents were just excited. Elders were there. There was a grandma there who yelled out to me, "I graduated in 1948." And I was so, always something I love and so excited to meet them. Came time for the game, and it was almost incredible because it stopped raining for the game, and the sun partially came out. And then, and unexpected, and quite honestly, absolutely appalling situation occurred when 15 to 30 teams entered Coleman Stadium, and they began fighting. Her administration was completely thrown off. Quite honestly, Edina Police Department that was thrown off there was not something that we expected. I want to say that they did handle it to the best of their ability. I do believe that. I know there's some questions about that. And when the students came in and drew and taunted other students, our students, and drew them in, I think that just escalated the situation. I have an update, and I know that several students were cited for disorderly conduct. I would, I can't say students, they're youth. That's what I can say. Several youth were cited for disorderly conduct. We know that there were three arrests that were made. We know that this does not reflect Edina values. I think that is what was, just why I was so dismayed, quite honestly. Because they do not reflect our core values or our core beliefs. We are working, continuing to work with the Edina Police Department. We actually had planned for, with our administrators, just as part of our focus on security, we had planned a tabletop already exercise. Tabletops is where you go through and you walk through a critical incident to plan and prepare. You have to prepare for next Monday afternoon, focusing on a different type of event. And now we are moving that to hone in and focus on this particular event and to just really deeply analyze it. What, well, what do we learn from this? What are some things that we're going to change to make certain that we can respond to the best of our ability and hopefully prevent something like that happening? I want to say to the community, I know there are several videos out there, and they sent some to me. And, you know, they are disappointing, and they break my heart, just like they are for everybody else. I also want to say that, while it may be hard to believe that right now, that's not Edina. That's not our Edina, and I know there are those who think that that's who Edina has become. That's an isolated incident that was terrible that it happened, the way it did. Take that very seriously. Believe in the safety certainly of all my students, all my staff, and of course, safety for our community. And as I said, we will continue to investigate it. We'll provide updates as I can, as I am updated from Edina Police Department. Again, these are students that came in and they are not from Edina Public Schools, may be not even from the city of Edina. And so it is really difficult to really isolate and narrow things down, and we have to partner with the police department in order to make certain that we're able to follow through with consequences the way that they, that they need to be handled. As far as our students, we do have oversight, and we are able to follow through with consequences and use our handbook in order to apply those consequences and take that very seriously. So again, to the community, sorry that that had to happen during such, just an important time and gathering for the community. And just know that I, in my cabinet, take this very seriously. And we're going to continue to move forward to make certain that Edina Public Schools, Edina Public Schools recreation spaces remain safe and solid place for everyone to come together. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. The meeting is over.